Good morning and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for December 1st. We are in December, the month of the holidays and Christmas and all the other holidays throughout December. The morning meeting of 9:00 a.m. and at this time, we'll ask for the invocation and pledge and I'll call on Commissioner Glenn Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dear Father, we come as humble as we know how this morning. Father, we come saying thank you. Thank you for another year as we've progressed through this year. Father, we thank you for the good help that you've given us. Father, we'd ask that this meeting be done decent in order. We ask you to remember that we remember that we do this for the citizens of Cumberland County and they've entrusted their trust in us. And Father, we'd ask you to just bless this board as we move forward doing that business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll go ahead and move to our presentations portion and I'm gonna reverse the order for our guest. And so at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Sharon Glover to come up to the front and I will meet you down there. And so we have a proclamation for you on your retirement. You're many years of service to this community, so I wanted to read this proclamation this morning for you. Whereas Sharon Glover has served with honor distinction for 20 years as a system of care coordinator at Alliance Health and with Cumberland County Mental Health Center. And whereas Ms. Glover has demonstrated exceptional dedication and professionalism throughout her career, consistently exceeding expectations in service as a role model for her colleagues. And whereas during her tenure, she can see a lot here. During her tenure, Sharon Glover has served in various capacities, including facilitating child and family team meetings, organizing the real-world annual events for middle school students with Cumberland County Public Schools, served as a key player for school care reviews for Cumberland County, served as a key player for multiple disciplinary boards for Cumberland County and Harney County, and a key organizer for Cumberland County collaborative monthly meetings and countless community outreach events. And whereas Sharon Glover has been an invaluable asset to Alliance Health and the Cumberland County Mental Health Center, showing tireless work ethic and steadfast loyalty to its mission and values. Whereas Sharon Glover is known for integrity, compassion for others, genuine kindness, and has earned the respect and affection of all who have had the pleasure of working with her. Sharon Glover has maintained a level of excellence as demonstrated by her tenacity during her career as a public servant to those in our community. Now therefore, we, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the many accomplished commitments and impactful work of Sharon, of Ms. Sharon Glover. And be it further resolved that Cumberland County Board of Commissioners proclaim Monday, November 17th, to be in honor of Sharon Glover and her dedicated service to the Alliance Health and Cumberland County Mental Health Center. Approved this 17th day of November 2025. Signed, Kirk J. DeViere, Chairman, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, any comments before we move to the next item?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, because I was...
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. Sharon, you know, we've done Alliance for an awful long time and I just want to thank you for the work you've done in this community. The outreach, when we go out to all of these places, all over, in the rain and the cold, you were there. And because of your tenacity, this community is so much better for all of your work and all of your efforts. And I served on the Alliance Health Board for a long time and you were invaluable in terms of the information and being able to call and find somebody to say, what's happening here in Cumberland County? So, thank you so much for all that you do.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other commissioners, Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to personally also give you, thank you for the work that you do as a mental health professional myself. I know the importance, the patience, and just what it takes to be in the field in itself. So, we do really appreciate your service and your time and your family supporting you as well because it takes many hours and flexibility is not a regular eight to five. So, we just want to, I just wanted to personally thank you for all that you do for our families here in Cumberland County. And enjoy your time with your family now that you retired. Travel a lot.
Ms. Glover, come by here and everybody wants to shake your hand if you don't mind. Come on by here. And Ms. Green, is there, Dr. Green, is there anything you want to add? While we're taking moments.
I think, so Ms. Glover was one of the first people I heard about when I started at the Health Department. And at the Health Department, we often talk about Ms. Sharon's list. And anytime we need to get something out to the community, we say, send it to Sharon because she has a listserv of, I don't even know how many people that are on the listserv, but we always talk about getting it out to her and because she just seems to know everything and everybody. And it's such, it's been such a pleasure to work with you and to, to know you and to learn from you. And we sit on many, many task force together. And you always have something insightful to say and always something profound and thinking first always about community. And so, it's just been a pleasure to work with you and to know you and to learn from you. So, we're grateful for the little bit of time I got to know you and appreciate all that you're doing. You're gonna make me cry too, so I'm gonna stop.
Ms. Glover, one more thing. You gotta come down here and get a picture. So, you are famous. All the stuff you've done. And we'll go ahead and move to the second presentation, the 2025 end of the year recap video. And I'd like to call on our communications director, Diane Rice, to present the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Our public information team has been pulling video and photos of you guys all year. If you haven't noticed them, at everything, almost everything you guys attend, our team has been there to try to capture just a little bit of all of the amazing things that our board has accomplished and our county's accomplished over the years. So, we'd like to show you this video. Sorry, I'm in charge here. That's it. Great job.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for, excuse me, Ms. Rice, thank you for your team and putting that together and capturing this very busy year according to that video. So, Commissioners, any comments? All right. Oh, Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say how enjoyable it's been to work with each and every one of you this year, coming on to the board as a new commissioner. I appreciate all of y'all's help and just a willingness to work with, with me as, as we all kind of learned this process and learned the ropes. So, I just wanted to thank everybody's leadership. I think we can accomplish a lot together when we work together. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners? All right. Thank you again to the communications team and to the whole staff for helping put that together. I think it's a great way to capture what we've been able to accomplish over this last year as a team. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and move to a presentation of plaques for the outgoing chairwoman and chairman. And so, I'm gonna go ahead and at this time, if you would, Vice Chairman, we're gonna move down. I'm gonna go in reverse order, so I'm gonna recognize the Vice Chairman first. So, we have a plaque for Vice Chairwoman that says, presented to Vice Veronica B. Jones this first day of December 2025, in grateful appreciation of your leadership as Vice Chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 2024 through December 1st, 2025, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Vice Chairman, I just want to say it's, I truly appreciate your voice, your partnership in what we've been able to accomplish this year. You've been a sounding board for me as a Vice Chairwoman and I can't thank you enough for your leadership and what you've been able to help us accomplish together as a team with this board. So, I want to present you this plaque.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. Every day I get the privilege, privileged to serve for an amazing community. I get the privilege to come to work and serve with all of you gentlemen and all of you women, and I do mean that sincerely. As the County Commissioner-at-Large and as your Vice Chair, as we all know, just as regular family, sometimes, you know, we go through our ups and downs, but I can definitely say that this year through my own ups and downs, this has truly been a great family to work with. We have to have a work family. I want to personally thank Ms. Counsel for always checking on me and everyone else for checking on me. It's important to have women leadership as it is to have men leadership and we all are leaders here. And it's no secret, you know, I'm just gonna keep it transparent. Had a lot of ups and downs. My sister passed and this, truly you all were a family there for me. Want to take the opportunity, speaking of family, everyone here has, has always just looked, you know, looked out for me and checked on me and I don't take that for granted. My niece, Sadia's, Shontae Van, she's in New York, taking a special shout out. Her birthday's tomorrow, but just know that it's appreciative. You know, when we get up every day, we have the privilege to serve for other people's families. And so, it is definitely an honor for those that are listening to be able to serve for a great community, come to work every day. It's a privilege to call all of you, not just teammates, but also friends. And so, I want to just personally say, thank you so much.
Chairman Kirk DeViere, it is an honor and privilege, first and foremost, to say that you're a great leader. We've been serving for years in this community and it's a great privilege to call you friend. It takes someone with leadership to be able to deal with all our different personalities and really have a passion and heart for the community as you do. We're both public servants and so it is my honor, as this states, Chairman Kirk J. DeViere, this day of December 2025, in gratitude and gratefulness, appreciation for your leadership as the Chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 2024 through December 1st, 2025, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. And again, it's my honor and privilege to present you with this for our way of saying thank you and we appreciate your leadership.
Make a couple of quick comments. You know, fellow commissioners, as we close out this year, just want to kind of take a quick moment to reflect. We just saw a great video that reflect everything that we were able to accomplish over this year. And I think the way I capture it when people ask me is that this board delivered. You know, we, we made sure that we prioritize clean, safe drinking water. We made sure that we look to fund schools and fund our children in those facilities. You know, we tackled a budget that was difficult in a year that we had a tax reevaluation, but we were able to lower the tax rate in a year that we were doing and not cut services. That's a big deal for a board that had a changeover of three new members in a year along with tax evaluation. So, that speaks to the veterans that have been on this board. And when I mean veterans, people that have been on this board for a while and your, in your guidance, but also to the new energy of the new board members that came in with some fresh ideas and fresh ways to look at things. You know, we worked to strengthen accountability, whether it was in parks and recreation, or we looked at how we're doing 911 and is there a better way to do it? And working with the city to look at mental health and how we do 911 in a joint manner. And we built stronger partnerships with our cities, our counties. You saw it in the video, back with our military, making those connections to our military. But I will say that none of this and everything you saw in that great video and everything we've been able to accomplish is because of one person on the dais. It's for each and every one of us, bring different experiences, bring different leadership styles, but more importantly, we found common ground. We found common ground to move forward, sometimes making compromises, but we found a way to accomplish everything we've, we've accomplished in a unified way. So, and the Vice Chairman, thank you again for your partnership, your steady voice. You always had the voice of the people and always reiterated that. And to my fellow commissioners, just thank you for trusting me. I know it was a leap in my first year on this board, but I thank you for trusting me, my leadership, to be able to guide this during this critical time for our community. So, it's been my privilege to serve you as, as a chairman. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to item two, election of officers. And so now I will open up nominations. We'll start with the chairman and I'll open up nominations for the chairman. Commissioner Counsel, you're recognized.
You gave me enough time to change my mind. But I nominate Commissioner Kirk Devier for chairman. He's done an admirable job, does it with grace and dignity. He did not give me that much space. I decided to take it since he couldn't tell me to shut up in front of everybody. But it's been fantastic. It's been a great year. And I nominate you for another term or to finish this term.
Thank you, Commissioner Council. Are there any other nominations for chairman? Are any other nominations for chairman?
No.
I'll go ahead and move to have the nominations closure this time. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we move to elect Commissioner Devier as our chairman by acclamation without objection.
Objection. There's an objection to that motion. Commissioner Tyson, I'll entertain another, excuse me. There's been objection to that motion, so we'll just go, we'll go ahead and move forward with the vote. Seeing no other nominations, we'll go ahead and move forward with the votes. The nomination is closed. At this time, I will entertain your vote for Commissioner Devier for chairman for another term. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
And by a vote of majority, Commissioner Kirk Devier is chairman for the following term. This time, we'll go ahead and move to vice chairwoman, and we'll go ahead and open up the nominations. Before I call on anyone, I would like to colleagues, as I'm allowed to make a nomination from the chair position, colleagues, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Veronica Jones for vice chairwoman. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the nominations be closed and that Veronica Jones be elected vice chairman by acclamation.
Objection. We've got an objection to that motion, so I'll go ahead and move forward to the vote. Only one nominee for vice chairwoman or vice chairman. That person is Commissioner Veronica Jones. All in favor, Commissioner Veronica Jones for vice chair. Raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Patel.
Majority of the of the board has selected Commissioner Veronica Jones as a vice chairwoman as we move forward for the next year. No need to rotate seats at this time, so I will go ahead and move to incoming chairs' remarks. I will be brief in my remarks, and if I can, I will actually step down to the podium and make some brief remarks as the incoming chair. Fellow commissioners, thank you again for your confidence in me to continue serving as your chairman. Commissioner Council, thank you for your vote of endorsement and support means the world to me based on who you are, what you've done in this community, and your understanding how this board operates and what this community needs. You know, this this year provided us a picture of what this board can do when we work together. As I mentioned before, we worked on all these different things from clean water to public funding, schools, to reducing taxes. Now we've got to build on that momentum, but more importantly, we've got to stay focused. So I will tell you that clean water, clean safe drinking water remains my top priority. We're going to continue to invest in water and sewer infrastructure to meet the needs of every corner of this county, residential, commercial, and government. We're going to keep our commitment to public education, ensuring every children, every child in Cumberland County has a fair start in life. And we're going to continue to partner, we'll start to partner to create pathways to grow our workforce in healthcare, applied technology, applied manufacturing and trades. This investment and our investment in the Cape Fear Valley Methodist Medical School, FTCC, Fayetteville State University, and our school system will provide us a workforce that we need to be a recruitment tool for our community. And we'll push forward with mental health. We know that this is an issue in our community, the $30 million mental health diversion facility that this board put into their budget and funded, along with our partnership with Fayetteville for 911 services that will incorporate mental health, will ensure that we make mental health a priority in our community, a resource that's been waited too long in our in our community. We'll also go ahead and make the regional aquatics center a reality, bringing tourism opportunities and quality facilities for our local athletes. And we'll be smart with our taxpayers' money as we've seen before. We'll continue to find ways to keep more money in their pockets while still delivering the services that we we must provide. And we'll continue to build strong relationships with our cities, our towns, our general assembly and governor, our federal delegation, to ensure that Cumberland County gets its fair share and ensure that we get the resources and investments we need to be the gateway to eastern North Carolina. And to my fellow commissioners, I remain committed to hearing every voice at the table, every voice at the table. We will not always agree, but I will always listen and work towards practical solutions that deliver results for our community. And to our community and those listening, my commitment is that we'll stay focused on what matters to you and the community, to our community, to our children, because they deserve nothing less. Thank you for trusting me again with your vote and with and with being your chairman. I look forward to this year. Thank you. At this time, I'll call on Vice Chairman Jones to make short remarks as incoming vice chairwoman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say first, I appreciate the opportunity of you all entrusting me to be your county commissioner at large, vice chairwoman. As the daughter of an educator, as he's already stated, we've done some amazing things. I will continue as your vice chairwoman, as a public servant, to make sure that we continue to have education at the far front of our concerns, as well as infrastructure, as well as mental health, as well as that of also the unhoused, and as well as we want to make sure that no one's left behind. We have the opportunity to be that of a military community, and we know the importance of continuing to keep that partnership with Fort Bragg, looking out and supporting our military families. So again, I just want to thank everyone. And I must also state that I appreciate the fact that we have diversity and making sure that women leadership stays at the table. I want to take this opportunity to say that, again, as women beside me says, Ms. Counsel, I would not be here if it had not been for her, one of my former mentors, Mary McGallister, who was the first woman to ever win at large, and then it took 42 years, 42 years for me to sit in her seat after that. So we will continue to make sure that we have equality, that we have social justice, and we will make sure that women leaders are at the table because our voices matter as well. I look forward to us continuing on this path to make sure that we keep education first, that we keep infrastructure first, that we keep that of mental health issues first, unhoused, as well as that making sure that all voices matter and that we make sure that a diversity of women leaders are also at the table. Thank you for entrusting me to be your vice chair, and I will continue to be a public servant to work for you, the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, vice chairwoman. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to item four, approval of the agenda. County manager, agree? Are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman Devier, there are no changes to the agenda.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, Vice Chairman Jones.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? We've got a motion to approve the agenda. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
It's time we'll move to item five, consent agenda. Commissioners, is there any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Vice Chairman Jones.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We've got a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And at this time, we've been asked to go ahead and present the proclamation for the HIV task force. I believe Dr. Green, you're going to receive this. Vice Chairman Jones is going to meet you at the podium to read the proclamation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Green, for all that you do, as well as all that your team does over at the Public Health Department. It's a pleasure to serve on your team, on your advisory board, and we just really appreciate you. And the proclamation states as, whereas today, we now join the world in celebrating the extraordinary advancements made in the battle against HIV and AIDS, remembering that those who have lost, and whereas over the past three decades, brave men and women have fought devastating discrimination, stigma, doubt, and violence as they stood in the face of this deadly disease. And whereas we have been witnessing an incredible progress of struggle against HIV/AIDS, it is far from over, with more than 1.2 million people in the United States currently living with HIV. This epidemic continues to impact individuals, families, and communities across our nation, underscoring the ongoing need to prevention, testing, treatment, and education. And whereas of those currently infected, 87% of people living with HIV in the United States are aware of their status, and the majority of new infections are spread by people who are unaware of their own status. And whereas HIV/AIDS does not discriminate, and it does not have, and it doesn't matter what neighborhoods or communities, Americans of any gender, age, ethnicity, income, or sexual orientation can and will become contracted from this disease, for it has no discrimination. Now, therefore, we, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day in Cumberland County, and urge town officials and the citizens of Cumberland County to join in activities, programs, and faith services to remember those who have lost their lives to HIV and to provide support and comfort to those living with the disease. And this states, adopted the 17th day of November, 2025, and it is signed by our chairman, Kirk J. Devier, the chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. And again, we thank you so much for the work that you and your team continue to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, commissioners. I just want to encourage people to, it is World AIDS Day. On behalf of the HIV Task Force, to go get tested today, our team and the HIV Task Force will be out at Fayetteville State University today doing free testing on campus. That's not the only opportunity. We have several community partners that are offering testing this week, and then of course, daily at the Health Department, you can come to get tested for free at no cost. And then our partners at Methodist and at Piedmont Health Services and Schreihack also offer a range of HIV services. So I want to say thank you to all of you for the recognition and the proclamation, and we'll take that back to the HIV Task Force who are getting set up right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other, any comments? Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, seeing no other business to become before us, I want to make sure I recognize our good sheriff. Sheriff Morgan is here with us this morning. Thank you for being here. And seeing no other business become, come before this body, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Vice Chairman Jones.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to adjourn, properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're adjourned.